Okay, time is 7:05 PM on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023. Recording has started. First item on the agenda is our public hearing, which we will have. All planning commissioners, including our alternate, are present for this meeting. There's two items for a public hearing. One has to do with changing a number of city codes that are involved regarding the height of a swimming pool fence. And we're changing it from four feet to six feet to comply with state standard requirement. So that's item number one. And item number two is a proposal to add the Section 8 mitigation zone to City Code 10-9 Public Facilities. The code was approved, or the mitigation zone was approved, I should say, but it was never included and added part of the Public Facilities section of our code. So kind of formality, but that's what that pertains to. So I don't see any other people signed on here for any public comment. Are there any here wish to make public comment? Okay, we have one participant here and no public comment from them. So we will close the public comment time. And move to our regular agenda for the Planning Commission meeting. John Stout, would you give us invocation? And Lori, would you lead us in the pledge? Let's do the pledge, we'll do the pledge first and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Our dear Father in heaven, as we come before thee this night as the planning commission, we are grateful for the place which we live, we're thankful for Woodland Hills, and thankful for the residents of this area. This time, we ask that thy Spirit will guide us in our decisions and different things which we discuss tonight that will be led by thee. We ask a blessing upon this city that it may continue to prosper and do well and move forward if it is expanding and different things are happening. We ask that thy Spirit will be with us in the future.
Amen. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Approval of the May 15, 2023 Planning Commission minutes. As I initially drafted them, Lori pointed out a couple of errors in there which have been corrected. So absent any other corrections, I'd take a motion to...
I'd like the emotion to approve the May 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Very well. The next item, number eight, a proposal to amend Table 10-7-1 to include a Public Facilities mitigation zone and a Public Facilities mitigation no trespassing overlay zone. These were both previously established, but they were not put into this, into the table on 10-7-1. So that's all this is doing is incorporating those two zones that were approved some time ago into the table. I sent out generally a copy of the tables. There's several of them having to do with the mitigation. And I think the part, if we did it right, there's a highlighted part there that shows where those Public Facilities mitigation and Public Facilities mitigation no trespassing overlay were included in the 10-7-1A table. So any discussion or comment concerns about that?
Have we identified what will be each zone that we're proposing to establish? What specific properties?
Yes, those properties individually will be zoned. Several of them have been already established with the mitigation work that was done. And they've been designated in those particular zones. So whenever, whether it's the just mitigation or mitigation no trespassing overlay, then that property will be identified as such.
Really, where the big retention point is, is the no trespassing, right?
Correct.
Of Eagle Nest.
Yes.
And then the mitigation between Eagle Nest and Loafer and the part that goes through the park would be the other mitigation zone.
Correct, but unless I'm wrong, I believe both of those are no trespassing.
But we've created a trail through both of those. They put a fence up...
The fence is up.
Along the mitigation zone, and they have actually put...
Mulch.
Mulch.
The mulch is still in the right of way. It's not on the lot technically.
No, it isn't, because that whole lot, we've lost for mitigation. It's all the whole lot.
I'm not a fan of the part that lay down, and I don't know who or where or what, but it was technically in that right of way, so technically it's not on the lot.
Thought the right of way was.
Well, yes, it is.
The right of way is part of it.
On the top end, the Eagle Nest end, that's true. It's really in the right of way. But then it moves to the north as it goes through that lot. And so then it is not in the right of way. It's in the middle of the lot.
I haven't put a texture on it.
So you're saying the part that's along Grizzly?
Yes.
There's a little trail that runs along City Right of Way.
On the top, but not when you come down, you're next to the road as you start off of Eagle Nest. And then it veers to the north and cuts across the middle of that lot. Because remember, we've got a serpentine going down there that goes from the north end, comes towards the south, and then goes north and south. And then it ends up going under the road, under Loafer, toward the north end of that lot. And then on the other side, where the park is, there's a split rail fence there as well that goes across the flood that is along this side in the flood mitigation. And it also has a path that has mulch on it for people to walk on. The trails, Trails and Rec is the ones that established that.
Can we designate that the trail part is not in the no trespassing overlay? That the rest of the lot is?
There are no trespassing signs that I've seen.
There was one, but it's down.
Up above, there are no trespassing signs.
Yeah, but there's one below that's fallen off. The post is there, but I don't know where the sign is, but I understand it's fallen off.
I've never seen that.
It's just opposite from the park, on the other side of the road, on the Grizzly side of the road there. But what did you say, Carrie? What did you say?
No, I said, can we just say that the trail is not part of the no trespassing section?
Well, we need to look and see, because it's been designated one way or the other.
The whole entire lot.
Yeah.
The two lots and the two lots are designated no trespassing. The stuff that went through the city park, I don't know. But that was designated, other than it was public.
We need to research that and see what...
Why didn't we have the trails of work?
Unless it was just...
Well, the path that was through there.
For your information, Trails and Rec didn't do that.
Who did?
I was on the BTR until about two weeks ago. BTR had nothing to do with it.
So who put the...
Wright-Witt.
Wright-Witt has a private 501(c) called Albor or something. That's who did it.
Alpine...
BTR had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, that's who funded it.
Well, Wright-Witt is part of PTR.
But he's not.
You started out with him.
He started, but he's not...
Who's his left?
I designed it because I've got too much coal to fire.
And they've called a new committee member recently. Some of you may know him.
Dallas Lissandis-London.
Yeah, the one I'm thinking of though is a DNR guy.
Yes. I don't know his name, but I know the title.
His name won't come to me now, but he's been, he's volunteered and agreed to be part of that. So we'll need to go back to council records and see what that got designated and...
The two and the two were no trespassing. I don't know about the park itself, if they cut the trees out.
Yeah.
I think we should make the zigzag part tubing place and let the kids play in the zigzag.
That's why it was no trespassing.
Children sledding down in the snow.
Be things as if it were people living in a lot.
So we'll look at that and we're...
But that doesn't impact this.
No, it doesn't.
We can still work on this tonight and on this as far as...
Yeah, we just need to make sure their zoning map properly shows what proper zoning is for those areas. So anyway, I'll take a motion to add those to our table in the 10-7-1A as we take these. Anybody want to make a motion to add that? Okay. Is there a second?
I didn't hear what the motion was.
It's to add those to the table.
Just add those to the table.
Okay, I did not hear that. I just said, I'll make a motion. I didn't hear anything else. I could have been, remove it. Oh, I knew.
Remove the sucker.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next item, nine, proposal to amend table 10-85 to include the Public Facilities mitigation zone and the Public Facilities mitigation no trespassing overlay zone to that particular table. And those have been, in this draft, I think I gave you a copy, those have been added at the very end of the table.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On this table, I have never understood this. R1-2PUD. Minimum lot size, two acres.
Yes.
Thousand Oaks is R1-2PUD. There are no two acre lots in that subdivision.
During discussions of the PUD, there were concessions made. And one of the concessions was the park up there. And so there was an adjustment made, although it's, and our ordinance is allowed for that, for lot sizes in exchange for...
And that's why it's a PUD. It's a planned unit development.
Correct, but along with the PUD allows for adjustments to be made, whether it's setbacks, whether it's lot sizes, whatever the bargaining is between the developer and the city, it allows for those adjustments to be made.
Okay, and I understand that way. Instead, all the other adjustments are in that line. The side setback is different than an R2. The front is the same and the back is the same. The side is different. So why isn't the minimum lot size different?
I can't tell you why one is and one isn't. But that's the bargaining that goes on with the PUD.
It just seems to me that that line ought to reflect what the minimum lot size is, not two acres.
That's the normal.
Yeah, or maybe an asterisk that says smaller sized lots can be negotiated or something like... See, R1-2, the minimum lot size is two acres. R1-2PUD, it says the same thing, two acres. If you look over...
Well, and lot and...
On the side setback between R1-2, the side setback is 30 feet. R1-2PUD is 15 feet.
So there is a difference.
And that's my point. Why doesn't the minimum lot size reflect the change that the PUD came up with? Why the side setback is different?
Is Thousand Oaks in the PUD or is it...?
Yes. Yeah, that's, it's all subject to change with negotiation. So it's flexible. It varies.
Wayne, it can't just be flexible. It's got to be written somewhere.
That's what the ordinance says. I mean, those kinds of things, concessions can be made in the PUD to make adjustments to all of that. I mean, I agree, it's not...
It makes no sense to me. Absolutely no sense. Where else have we got a zone where the minimum lot size does not cover what's in that zone? Show me one other one that it doesn't cover.
So is it talking about an average of two acres per home?
Now, you've already got a description at the bottom of that table on the next page. Yeah, I know. There's an asterisk there that says they are as shown unless changed or modified in Article Government Planned Unit Development Zones. So maybe there should be an asterisk there under that two acre...
Now, what does 10-10A say?
That's, I think that's the PUD.
That may be where the...
Part of the ordinance.
That may...
But then there should be an asterisk by that two acres.
Yeah.
10-10A?
10-10A.
There's no asterisk anywhere in...
And that's the Planned Unit Development, overlay chapter.
That asterisk there should be by the R1-2PUD.
Yeah. In fact, there should be an asterisk there, the whole, the R1-2PUD, not just in the, I mean, in the main district, you know, an asterisk showing that.
Those can be changed. Well, the asterisk either needs to go for that whole, or it's on a line.
The whole lot, the whole road.
Well, there's, because the minimum lot width says it's 202. Obviously, that's not the case. Because that lot's 132.
Yeah, I think we...
So if you put it in the district, then it could impact...
Yes. And I don't know why they have the asterisk that shows that that it can be changed or modified, but there's no asterisk in the whole table.
No, that's right, yep.
And I'm wondering if somebody just left that out.
Yeah.
There is, if you go to set piece, Mountville overlay, it's got the double asterisk. Single asterisk.
Yeah, and the triple asterisk is at the top on the minimum corner lot setbacks.
You just need a single asterisk.
R1-2PUD.
Yep.
Does it also apply to the R1-1PUD?
It says right here it's PUD, single asterisk.
Only pertains...
This is R1-1.
R1-1PUD and R1...
Oh, yeah, any PUD, it should be referenced that.
So I think both of those should have an asterisk.
Yeah.
Yep, that's my two cents worth. Well, and actually in 10-10A... E4A extends one family detached joint, one half acre, or 21,780 feet. And the R1-2, and it actually identifies 760 feet. Well, it appears that in this regulation, it says the minimum lot size is a half acre. R1-2PUD. I'm just saying one isn't the chart. But that would cover your concern.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the chart ought to say that. So that's why I put an asterisk there and then we'll prove it. If we put the asterisk in.
Well, what we need to do is go back and see if it's gotten left out inadvertently.
It could be inadvertently.
It may have been and never been... So we'll pursue that. Several others, look at that. See what we need to do to clarify that in there.
So can I make a motion to accept that, hit me, the asterisk? Or not?
With 10-85? With amending the 10-85 table?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, is it also approved? No. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
It's the one table.
Lori's made a motion to amend that.
Second it.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Any abstentions?
Okay, item 10, proposal to amend City Code 10118 (3). And this has to do with swimming pool fence heights.
That's Section 4, correct? Section 3 and 4?
Section, yes. Well, there's two, there'll be two different motions. One is changing a lot of narrative, and that's in Section 4. Section 3 is just changing the height, excuse me, Section 4. Section 4 and 5. Section 4 is the 101183, where we change the height of the fence to 72 inches from 48 inches. So these are different sections. Let's take them one at a time. So that'll be number 10 on the agenda.
I think that's dislabeled on number 10, Wayne.
Yes, 101183. Even though she, they're referring to Section 4, it's amending City Code 101183. Changing the height of the fence to 72 inches from 48 inches. So take a motion to...
But it's in Section 4, I disagree.
Yeah, Section 4 is just a part of this document.
There, as I was looking over the current code, swimming pools are actually covered in two different places.
They are.
So we really need to change two places.
And that'll be the second motion.
Okay.
Ah, if you look at the next page, he's got it in red. It's all crossed out.
All that will be changed. So that's the second part of the swimming pool fence.
Wayne, should it address the state code somewhere in there? Should it say something to the effect of...
To comply with the state.
To comply with state code or whatever is more stringent? Or that's typically what you see in a permitting process. Or would that just be something that would be on the city's list?
I think just something on the side that we would put in there. And Jody is going to format these when they're presented to the city council. What you're suggesting would not be out of order either.
It'd be good, because then it gives you a core or base to do that. Where you can blame it on a different...
Yeah.
Because it is what it is.
So we can approve it with that suggested change in verbiology to include this is being done to comply with state code and put that into the word change.
I think it could be something that could protect the cities for liability reasons and the developers and homeowners as well.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, before I heard that, I thought, why are we doing this? Now I know.
Oh, okay.
And some other homeowner made the same thing. Why is the city doing this? Because it's... So I think it brings us into compliance with the state. What Sean suggested, Stout. John said.
Yeah, I know you're talking about it.
Yeah.
And all it would take would be a paragraph saying in accordance with or in compliance with state code, right after that, 72 inches.
Yeah, how long has been changed? So... Okay, we'll take a motion then with that addition or change to reference the state code as to the reason for making the change to include that in the ordinance.
I'll motion to approve that.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And the second then is the 101116A. Part of that, where that whole fencing requirement will be taken out. And...
It just says C.
See what we just did, yeah. So we don't have it in two different places. So I'll take a motion on that. Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Okay. Lori, second it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? All right.
Real quick, Wayne.
Yes.
This little sheet here, on this section 3 here.
Yes.
We're just talking about, so some structures shall be built in this zone, start about the, you know, trespassing. Access to the property is limited to authorized city officials slash employees or contractors to-
That's four, it's supposed to be, it'd be four of eight.
Four of eight, that was, I just wanted to bring it up.
Joe, honestly, thank you, we, Joey cut that name, that, that one. Be part of that, four of eight, that's all I thought. Thanks. Okay, item 12, proposal to add section 8 mitigation zone to the city code 10-9, public facilities.
So that's back on that chart that we looked at?
Yes.
The two that are highlighted?
That's, that chart is 107A. She got it mixed up.
Yeah. I'm usually mixed up, when Jody looks this up, I'm really mixed up.
Now, there's two different places. There is a 1071A, the list of districts. Okay, and that's what we approved before, and then establishment of districts. And then the 109 deals specifically with the chart in the public facilities chapter, or district. So that, that chart is 109.
It's 10, section 8. 109 of what? The only chart in 10-9 has to do with siding, rear yard setbacks. Yeah, and this is, it says it will include a section 8 mitigation zone with a no trespassing to read, as John just read. No structures shall be built in this zone, access to property is limited for maintenance. It's in section 3 of this handout, right there.
Okay. Yeah, that'll be, that's what the, section 8, right now there is no section 8.
Right, it's, that's-
So that'll be added to that.
Include.
Public facilities district as a narrative comment. Be, be, below the signs. So that's what 12 is.
Okay.
So I'll take a motion to approve that verbiage.
I saw move.
Section there. Okay, Larry, motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now that takes care of the ordinance changes then. Next item, 13, accessory buildings in public facility zone. This is what Larry's been working on.
Now, I sent you an email about two, three hours ago.
Yes, I think everybody-
I sent it to everybody.
Got it.
I was going to print it, but we got a new computer and it has-
Doesn't like you yet.
That's, that's the truth.
And I, I tried to print it too, my printer's not liking me.
I printed it and just left it on my desk. Do you want me to go get it?
Yeah, would you? Make copies?
Show me copies, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Mary.
So... Is there a specific circumstance that's pushing this?
A little bit.
Maybe know the details.
Sure, yeah, sure. The, our public facilities allows for accessory building. But our ordinance on accessory buildings does not show that accessory building is approved in a public facility zone. So, we, we want to match, match that up and add the, there's different zones that allow accessory buildings. We want to add that the public facility zone is one of those.
Okay.
But now it's excluded.
You're not looking to change the setbacks or anything, you're just trying to allow that option on public?
Correct, but what we've, what Larry's been working on, and we've had some brief discussion, on how do we address the setbacks? And those individual requirements, should there be different considerations in a public facility zone for accessory building?
Can I make a suggestion there? I advise, it's not a one-size-fits-all, the city probably should lead by example, they're on setbacks, and not trying to make different rules that apply to them than the residents. Depending on what the circumstance might be, does that make sense?
Yeah, and we've talked-
That's why the, the email I sent you was that the guiding principle will be the setbacks will be the same in, as adjacent properties. And exceptions to that would have to be considered by either the planning commission or the city council.
Thanks, Mary.
It's item number three there, John. So that means, my interpretation is that, that means generally, any accessory buildings will follow the same setbacks and configurations as adjoining properties.
Just fair.
Uh, unless there is a circumstance, then that would have to come to the planning commission and/or the city council, and probably with some impact, comments by the neighbors with the adjoining properties, so they can have some feedback and understand what's going on. I know my, my daughter lives up in Missoula, Montana, and, uh, they have a new development up there being considered by the city council, and it allowed for a church to have a structure, I think 75 feet tall, even though everything, and, and what it was, was it was a steeple.
Yeah.
For a church. And so people were just, you know, 75 foot church, not in my neighborhood, but when they understood, and the city council was just, just a steeple, the actual building is still limited to half that, or whatever. All of the inversion, all the inversion went away.
Yeah.
Anyway, I can answer questions or concerns, but I've addressed those areas that we discussed, and recommended changes, uh, in, in part, 10-9-2. Allow descendants that public facilities district, the accessory building can be a standalone structure on the property, as recommended by Wayne. No changes to parts B, or C, or E. R D specific, uh, including city office, fire station, emergency services, and mail facilities. We talked about that last meeting. And in part, yeah, add restrooms.
Something like storage facilities?
I think it's already in there.
Okay.
Let me look and make sure. Yes, in part A, accessory buildings uses includes, uh, public parking, storage, oh, it's storage garage, not storage areas, so we can put storage garage, storage, and maintenance or heating facilities. So we can stick storage there in A.
We just said a storage facility?
Yeah.
That, uh, cover?
And may include, and/or storage facility, sure. Because that's what we're looking at for the park, right?
Yes. And, over here at the salt shed too, they're wanting to put a container over there.
Larry, I don't quite understand why the last phrase, it'd be a standalone structure on the property. Is there something that says it can't be a standalone?
Yes.
Under, under, uh, accessory buildings.
Yeah.
It says you cannot have a standalone.
Yeah, people can't have a vacant lot and then just put on a shed or something. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. We've had several who wanted to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially in structure, or in three years, or whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Ten years.
Well, eventually I have a house there.
I'd answer that then, Severn? I'm still perusing. And then number four, we had discussion last meeting about setbacks and configurations for churches, we specifically talked about lot sizes in churches, and also places for public assembly, but we didn't reach any conclusions or recommendations on that. I think if everybody's good with that, we could turn it over to Jody to write it up, and then... Do we need to have a public hearing on that, Wayne?
Uh, we will.
Okay.
I, I still don't understand.
Okay.
Because when I look at all accessory buildings, in 10112C, there's something there said it can't be a standalone building. Where is it?
Let me look.
Because you can't have a business.
Well, too, the very name implies it's accessory. It's something else, it's not a primary, it's an accessory. So if it's the only building on the property, it's not accessory building.
Accessory to something.
It just says, no detached accessory building can be located and that's the setback. Accessory buildings cannot be erected in required setback. No detached accessory building in a residential, solid seat 17 feet high. There's nowhere that I see that this section can't have.
Just a building.
Detached accessory building. Well, that's why I'm asking, what if we say it can be separately attached? Because accessory building can be separately attached. I have a separate attached accessory building.
Why is it accessory?
Huh?
Why is it considered accessory by definition?
It's a separate but subordinate unit to the primary.
Shit, watch, the Hebrew greenhouses, similar buildings, once a shot.
That's okay, accessory.
But it is.
But it is because you have a primary.
Detached building.
It is.
But it's accessory to your house.
Yeah, it, the definition is a separate but subordinate unit to the primary building.
So you can't have a building by itself without a primary building.
All right.
Accessory building can't exist without a primary residence.
An accessory building is the building on the lot.
For, on public facilities.
Yeah, right, that's what we're saying. We're not crazy. All right, all right, I'm, I'm finally getting it.
Sounds like you'll turn it to Jody and let her work it then?
Yeah.
Here's, here's another definition, um, a structure on which, a structure which is on the same parcel of property as a principal structure.
And under definitions of title, in title 10-2-1, it's under the, it says accessory use or outbuilding structure, any use or non-dwelling structure related to the principal use of a dwelling structure on the same lot, and serving a purpose customarily incidental to the use of the principal dwelling structure. So, it gets its wide by its-
Creates that option.
Yeah. What do we want to do on, uh, item 4? There with that, uh...
I don't know that we need to do anything, I just put it there because it was part of our discussion.
Is it, the setbacks are going to be kind of taken care of with item 3?
Right.
We talked about parking and things for churches, to make sure we had the right size lot, things like that, and I think that would be something that would just-
Deal with when we come to it.
Deal with when it comes to it, because I don't think you can really say, if it's a small congregation or whatever, I think we just leave it like that, right?
Well, parking is covered in another-
Yeah, it is.
-ordinance, public parking, so.
So it'll be covered when that was asked for.
Yes. Okay. Are we good with that generalization then? We've put together, uh, some verbiage that will, uh, include, include those ideas, principles?
And did you mark on item A, under 1A, to include-
Include storage facility.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We'll put something together with that, and get back, and we'll have, we'll have, have to have a public hearing and go forward, but we'll move forward with that then. Larry, thank you for, uh-
Yeah.
-shepherding that, and helping with that. Next one to have is, uh, general discussion on Severn's favorite topic. Fencing.
Don't fence me in.
No, no, that's Dave Price. Dave Price is the one that said, no fence.
Yeah.
So currently, we've reworked this over the last couple of years, aren't we good?
We've made a few changes to it. Are there things that we think need to be clarified better?
Yeah, if you're in violation, tear it down and move on. Does that solve that for you?
No, if we just, if we just add some enforcement now to do that.
There's this thing called an injunction. File it.
Well, it's a-
I know.
Work in process.
Well, I, I will bring this up.
Okay.
This is a distinction point between Wayne and I. In, um, a part that applies to R119, not a normal lot.
Where are you at?
I'm on C, very last, last page. Actually, the next last page, where's the line? It says on here, in paragraph, where is it? 9, no block wire, thread wire, or chain link fencing is approved to use. I approved a chain link fence, now enforcing it. And I argued with him, he didn't have the authority to do that. Because it says no chain link fence. Now, the other part of the fencing ordinance says you can use chain link that is part of covenant. It doesn't say that, 40119, it just says- It doesn't say that, R 119. It just says, no chain link, period. And so I think we ought to bring it in line with the other fencing ordinance and say, only vinyl covered chain link is approved. And we can make his decision later.
And I was involved in this too, and Severn and I, and this goes back a year or so.
Probably.
The three of us had some discussion and Severn and I were feeling similar.
And if you have a berm under the saddle long enough, the little stick.
Well, the berm, the berm moved on.
That's what I mean.
And I, I don't, I, I don't have any objection to that.
The other dialogue we had was behind of the things. And the way we have written it, if you don't put it on the property line, it could be talked about. Well, down there, six feet, up here, it has to be 75% open. Down there, it could be solid. Now in R 119.
Yeah, R 119.
And there are several that have solid fences down there. I don't have a problem. We only have one issue that is outstanding over an eagle nest. Where they started to put in a six foot fence, not 30 feet away from the road, which is what the ordinance applies to now.
For six foot fence.
So question, going back to your R 119 here, about the 0% visibility down there. So on the very back page here on five, which is R 119, it says, vision barrier fences are permitted.
Yeah.
Provided they do not interfere with the safety of motorist, bicycle, pedestrian.
Yeah.
So, so a solid fence is okay.
In the R 119.
On the R 119, yes.
Down there.
And there's, there's one like that.
Yeah.
Down there too. There's, there's a few that have.
There's also the swimming pool height in here. Does that, will that change?
Yeah, that.
The other thing though, it says, and that you can have fence not higher than 42 inches anywhere on the property.
This is anywhere in the city?
This is governed primarily anywhere other than.
R 119.
R 119.
And, and we have, there are properties that has further entrances. In the front yard, Jimmy DeGrasse already has one. There's one over on, on Eagle Nest. And my contention is, the issue, the one that's an issue on Eagle Nest, if you cuts it down to 42 inches, you can build it where it is.
But let's see, fences or hedges taller than 42 shall not be located less than 30 feet from the property line.
Taller than 42.
Abutting a street.
Yes.
Right of way. So it still has to be, if it's under 42 inches, then it can be along the street.
Yes.
And what, what page are you looking at?
Um, 78.
78.
Except the camp patrol, patrol, patrol be gone, be in front of the plane of the residence. There's that restriction.
That's the restriction.
No, not for less than 42.
Now with 42 inches.
Yeah, it is. Look, look at E.
10, 11, 8, B, H, fences or hedges, 42 inches or less and high, may be placed anywhere on the building lot except as restricted in subsection B 1B and B 1C, but that doesn't say anything about the front plane of the residence.
We've got a conflict then. Because E, part E, says fences or hedges taller than 42 inches shall not be located less than 30 feet from the property line, abutting a street right of way, but can run along the side.
Taller.
Or rear lot.
Taller than 42 inches.
Okay. That's the one that deals with the plane.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's taller than 42. The way it's written, that fence on Eagle Nest, if you cuts it down to 42 inches, you can build the whole thing where it is.
There's subsections B 1B and B 1C. Can somebody pull those up?
Page 78, aren't they?
They're there.
Oh, just the second page there.
Fire hydrant and the electrical box, I think.
Battery farms too.
Yes. It's a public trail, crossing a public trail.
Yeah, spoken trail and rideaway are the two exceptions. Rideaway, I haven't really built a game.
But it has to be, it's going to be a lot.
No.
Most of our rideaways are on the easements, I should say, are on the backside of a lot. But most of our utilities are run along the front of a lot, so it doesn't, it doesn't impact it.
Do we have some in the old section of the city that are on the backside?
I don't, I don't think so. Seldom do. I don't remember a time where we've had the backside of a lot issue. And that's kind of, I mean, I don't know why easements are ridden that way because the problem is you can't go down the side of, you don't have an easement to go down to the side of a lot to get to the back where the easement is. You'd have to come in from, from the right of way, public street, and go all the way down the backside of all these lots to get to wherever your problem is.
Most plats have easements on all four sides, at least.
Yeah, and ours, ours doesn't say that way, so. That's why I think most of them are in the front.
I think the spring drive, there are a couple of side easements.
Normal would run it on all four sides of the property, just.
Just in case, yeah. And that's something we may want to look at in the future, but, but I think most, right now anyway, it's all on the front, so. Not being an issue. Any other?
So nothing needs to be changed? Is that what you decided?
Well.
Well, there's other, there might be a conflict. I think, I think somebody needs to dig into the deeper than our group.
Guiding to 42 inch.
Whether he could cut down that and build it as is.
Whether it could be not on the front of the plane of the house.
The issue is, when he requested his building permit, that, that's the guy, at that time, whatever ordinance we had in place is the guiding ordinance for whatever is for him, so.
And this, this ordinance was in place at that time.
Yes, it was. So this would be the go, this would be the go by, whatever.
I went by the same ordinance he did, so I don't know what that, why it needs to be changed.
No, yeah.
But we need to tell him that, and I don't think we told him.
We told him his fence is illegal.
Why? And that's it?
Because it's.
As it was proposed, yeah, yeah.
But we haven't told him, hey, you can cut these to 42 inches and build your fence right where it is.
I think that's been pulled to him by Craig.
Craig told him that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
At least Craig told me he said that.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
I was going, because I, I asked you what was in the letter. I didn't listen to the letter. Same.
Thank, yeah, verbal discussion. And it remains as it is. So.
Is he a respondent, is he, no matter?
Not really, no. Just verbal, just verbal discussion. Yeah, no written, nothing written back to the city. But I agree with you. I, I, bubbling to the surface. I need to pursue it.
As an enforcement officer.
Yeah, yeah.
Who taught you to that, Wayne?
The mayor. He came to me on bended knee and tears in his eyes.
You fell for that?
Ted will take the fire seat job, and he has to be the sole enforcement officer too.
Ted said, I've got a real job I have to go to.
So is, is Ted still working for a machinery firm?
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's the job.
This is not the same kind of job that.
No. So, so let, let me give you a bit of an update, Severn, and Wayne's. So this is what Craig did before. So Ted's doing this, I'm doing this, Wayne's doing this, Chris Tambasco's doing this, and I suspect others are doing. So we've all been handed a piece, a slice of the pie of what Craig was doing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you doing?
I, I think there still might be more pie. It still needs.
Yeah, as time goes on, we find new pieces of pie.
Who's doing, who's doing the mechanic or the vehicles?
Well, that's, so.
The review of it, to make sure that it gets done for the fire, is Brian touches.
Is going to track, he, he's our logistics officer now for the fire department here. He's going to track maintenance on the fire equipment. He's not doing it, but he's going to track it, seeing when it needs to be done, when it needs to be done, etc.
And for city staff, Corbett is doing this.
Well, I know that when I did the Sowers study, I became a water chief's job. Donald, Donald liked listening and said, you say, I mean, he's rebuilding lowes, making everything run and everything. I said, it's not the job description. I'm sorry, it's not the job description. I can't evaluate.
Yeah, no, Craig, Craig has done an excellent job with our fire. Five years I've been here.
But the stuff he was going doing was, you know, he wasn't rebuilding engines.
No, no.
He was taking a part off the boat and putting it in one of them.
He maintained them and, and did stuff that I don't even know what.
Thanks, Ben. He, but he.
Bye, Ben.
And the challenge is, is, you don't take that thing down to just a road change, any of them.
Craig was doing more than, than.
Than what was on the list.
I mean.
Because his background and knowledge, he knew how to do something.
Two gallons on these widgets.
So, yeah.
Yeah. But, um, Sowers said, and what he was doing was what we call a global equipment servicer. Which is, it's not a high level thing. You know, or he was what you might call an automotive plumber, taking a part off and putting it in one of them.
Part of the challenge is, is knowing what part to take off.
I, I would, I don't know where, how you would classify a master mechanic.
Well, I, but he wasn't doing master mechanics.
No, he was.
He was a master mechanic.
Right.
But he was not doing master mechanic stuff.
Maybe not as defined.
Master mechanic stuff means you are rebuilding an engine from scrap, you know, taking, taking it apart, biting with soil, replacing all the parts, putting it back together.
And we, he did that on pumps. I helped him on, on our big engine. We had to take some valves off the pump and do that stuff. I would, Ted and I helped him for a whole couple of days to redo some valve on that.
Once again.
Yeah, our old brush truck, yeah, I'd say, may not have been in it, but he was doing all that stuff.
Yeah. And that's, he's still, he's still working. He's working for his son-in-law, doing that kind, they're, they're on call for diesel servicing out in the field, so.
Craig's busy. He's just making more money, a lot more money. So I, there's been some discussion about having Craig help still maintain the fire fleet. I don't know where that's at, but I know that's been some dialogue.
Yeah. Do we need to do anything with the fencing stuff right now? I.
My suggestion is just have somebody make sure it all jives and there's no conflict, I guess. Maybe we've done that in some.
What, what do you think, Severn?
I mean, I think the only thing that maybe need to be changed is the part for R 119, I'm saying
Vinyl cover.
Vinyl link, vinyl covered chain link. And then, then we're in safe return.
That's a deal.
Yeah. Any objections to moving forward with that?
Make it. They take chain link out of there and then you approve materials and vinyl covered chain link. Maybe that's the, you know, most people changes.
Is there any reason that they, we're approving more than what we have up here? Not the material, but the way the fence is built.
Well, it's more of what I'd call a traditional subdivision.
Yeah. Should we just leave that with the vinyl covered, chain link fencing approved and not meddle with?
The, the only other thing that I noticed is, um. 75% C2.
But if they could do it, it'd be approvable, right?
Maybe pillars and then a board across or.
I mean, it does say, basically, a concrete may be used for fence posts for pillars only. But why do we say acceptable fence return if these natural stone, wood, vinyl, vinyl coated chain link wire and lot iron?
Because it could be a combination.
Because one, it could pertain, if you've got a fence 42 inches or less, then there's no restriction to the openness.
If you go up to F.
Look at F, look at F, under B.
Top of 78A.
BF. Says fences taller than 42 inches shall be the 75% open if they are less than 60 feet from the property line. So.
Okay, so you can have a, a natural stone fence, 42 inches less than 42 inches.
Yeah.
Three and a half feet.
I know, I know a little bit what in, what went into this fencing ordinance, and it was, it was.
It's a nightmare.
It was. I can't tell you how many times back and forth, back and forth.
I can imagine, someone who you were dealing with, like, with the council and us and everything else. I mean, surprised anything got.
I was in Palma. It started before I left to go on permission to Palma. And in fact, I'm just about the time I got there.
Many years for your company?
Years. But my fence around my garden, which is 10 feet high, was already out. My trees, which go along from my fence, which now are a hedge, taller than 42 inches. My trees, which go along from my fence, which now are a hedge, all of the forty-two inches were already planted before this was finalized. So I just have to keep it maintained.
Well, now they're legal.
Benefits to grandfathering.
So, yeah.
Lot of benefits.
Pretty solid.
Okay, well, let's move forward then, maybe with just that one change with the vinyl covered chain link being approved for the R-119. So, put together some wording for that. Anything else? Any miscellaneous or before we...
Yeah, I'm wondering if we should look at driveways and their setbacks.
Thank you. I'm, that got, that got overlooked on this.
So you're talking about a driveway, not that's just an opening, but a driveway that comes adjacent to the street?
The driveway that comes to the street.
Yeah, so if you had something that came over to the parking area?
There's some question about it. We, we've been, I've been flexible in the driveway width. At what point does the driveway become an apron to, to the garage, to get into the garage? People have wanted to get over close to the property line and, and swing into a garage, something like that. And I've been very, I, I feel very flexible. I don't consider that part of the driveway. It's a subjective thing as to how far the driveway comes from the road to wherever this apron is that they, they want to, uh, they want to have. And I've been very flexible with it and I don't...
Isn't concrete technically landscaping?
It, it is. I mean, we've looked at it that way.
Isn't the Cyclone checklist have something about the driveway's gotta be minimum maximum from the property line?
Twenty feet, okay? But how far does that extend down?
Is that everywhere or is that...
Yeah. And why?
And, and when we built our house, well, we were told that we had to keep it twenty feet away from the block and block until we got to the front plane of the house.
And I don't know where that comes from. I, it's not in our...
So, the front plane of the house, ours is narrow, wider so the wind can swing in from your garage.
For the very reason, yeah.
So...
Are we getting a lot of that right now or is it just...
Well, it's, a little bit. People want to enlarge that area. The driveway setback is twenty feet for until, and again, it doesn't make much sense.
But you could put a sport court up to the property line or a cement pad or landscaping, cement landscaping.
So, for example, the, to some of our previous questions, R-12PUD, two acres, but a R-1, and that's twenty feet, but an R-180, which is essentially almost two acres, is ten feet. Why? I don't, what was explained to me, the reason for the twenty feet, was the snow blowing. So you're not blowing snow on your neighbor's yard. You're twenty feet away.
You know, the snow blowers that are up by me throw thirty feet.
I, I know. I know.
Because my neighbor up hill from me, he's owned by somebody else. Yeah, I, I get his snow all winter and I'm...
You blow it back?
No, because that's not where my driveway's at.
But, I mean...
I had ten, I had to snow ten feet deep there. And half of it was his and half of it was mine.
Yeah. So, we've had some issues. We get down to R-119 and the driveway setback is seven and a half feet. And then the mountain bill, that's five. So, everybody keeps asking, "Why twenty feet?" And I don't have a good answer, other than what was explained to me years ago was the snow blowing part of it.
Which is very real up here.
Uh, yeah. And maybe back in those days, snow blowers would only blow to twenty feet. So, I don't know, but...
Maybe that should be another ordinance to consider is putting your snow on your neighbor's property or water drain until it's kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
Stay covered, it takes the water. You're supposed to retain a whole...
Because that includes snow. Can you push your snow out of your neighbor's property? Probably not.
When it's in snow form, I don't know.
It's water.
It could blow over there too.
Yeah.
Well, we've got an issue right now with the neighbor and they got a heated driveway and the waters melt, water, the snow melts and it's coming onto the city road as well as the neighbor's.
And it's from the streets road in the city and it was bad pollen this winter.
Yeah. So we're trying to get that addressed, but, uh...
So, any thoughts on that?
On that specific thing?
Yeah. Because I have to get a run up that and I've got a dump salt real heavy and with it being year three and the tires getting a little more used on the truck I was on, multiple runs to get up that, the first time of each storm.
What we've talked about is they have quite a setback from the property line and for them to do some landscaping that would retain a lot of the water runoff into the landscape area before it drops off over into the neighbor's driveway or comes onto the street. We've talked about a sump box there at the street where the water would likely come to collect into there and go in. So, though that's...
Is this a skyline?
It's probably all where it's at, it's gotta be controlled. You've got about a half acre of heated driveway there.
Yeah, it's big. Anyway, what are your thoughts, our, what are your thoughts about changing the driveway setback?
Twenty seems a like a lot.
I would, I would have loved that.
Twenty feet?
No. I would have liked a smaller.
We've looked at a lot and it's either something that we haven't paid a lot of attention to, because there's a lot of driveways that are closer than twenty feet to the property line, so...
That could be shrunk, but I, I think there should be some type of a caveat somewhere about maintaining all forms of moisture on your property, which, you know, including but not limited to small rain. Not sure where you put that.
The state keeps coming down with more and more eliminating requirements.
Yes. I've been watching that for twenty years and they're slowly but surely eliminating city camp mandate exterior details, the ADUs. You're seeing the state more and more coming in and taking that control away from the city.
And developers, they've got the state's legislature ears and so they're promoting, you know...
And yet the developer, if he does his own little development, can impose all the CCNRs he wants.
Yes.
But it's up to him to enforce it, obviously.
So, what are your thoughts, our, what are your thoughts on the driveway setback? We can certainly make a proposal to reduce it.
Well, it sounds like smaller lots are already smaller, all the way down to five feet or seven and a half, right?
Yeah.
Maybe it's twenty. It's a lot of things.
What's that?
Ten.
Twenty. Twenty. I mean, right now...
So what does the twenty apply to?
One acre PUD, two acre PUD, one acre lot and two acre lots. And who, when we get into, and we don't, it was probably a designation used in the older lots. We have the R, the eighty and the forty, which is a half, an acre and a two acre. A two acre and they're both ten. So, the PUDs are twenty, but yet those are ten.
But incomparable is ten.
Yeah. So that's the inconsistency bit with, with, with the ordinance. And my neighbor's is too, right on my property line, right against it. So, I, I don't know how long these, these setbacks have been in place, but there's just a lot of inconsistency throughout the whole city. And we don't seem to get a lot of pushback.
Yeah, this is not one you're getting a lot of, not like fencing and other stuff.
Yeah, I'm not saying you're not twenty feet, you know, and so...
You better just take it out.
Even should, should there be some standard?
I think there should be some.
Like five feet? But there can be landscaping or weighted, like you're talking, a way to buffer it or mitigate a problem. It gives a, a place to put a...
I mean, yeah, you get some lots here that are, there's so much topography change that a five foot side yard or ten foot may not be enough time to put a retaining wall.
Yeah, or you get the driveway to even slope property.
We've, there've been a couple of variances given to people who wanted to redo their driveway because of an existing steeper slope.
Yeah.
Whatever our, what our standard is now, they've been allowed to do that.
And that would be a legitimate situation, I think, for variance.
What do you think if we, if we recommend a change to five feet across the board?
It's more consistent.
I think you will have, you need to put some verbiage in there that, because some of these lots, five feet's not going to be enough.
Well, they still can do a variance if, if they, if that's...
No, I'm not, I'm not saying engineering wise, it's not going to be enough. If their lots here and this guy's here, they're going five feet and they've got a ten foot vertical draw, you can't put a retaining wall with a five foot linear feet. Does that make sense? You might allow it, but it can't be done.
So they'll have to be farther from their property line than five feet?
Or they'll figure out a way to make it work that shouldn't work.
Means to minimum five feet if they want to take it twenty feet.
Oh, no, no, yeah, fine. Yeah, they might want to push the five feet and then say, "Okay, well, I can't do it with a rock retaining wall, so I want to put a ten foot high retaining wall of concrete." Because I want it to be wide at five feet.
And I, I don't think there's anything, other than it has to be engineered if it's over four feet, to any...
I'd hate to be down...
I'd hate to be down downhill side.
Because blowing the snow down there would go fifty feet into my yard. You've got ten feet to shoot it off.
So would, would you allow then the building official to make accommodations where, where topography requires it or some other verbiage there that would allow more, more flexibility in, in, in doing that?
And again, I'm, I'm going to push the, nobody's going to enforce this, but I think people need to be aware that if you're going to tighten up that side yard or that driveway side yard, you've got to keep the snow on your lot. Just because it shrinks doesn't give you permission to throw it over there.
You can start at the neighbor's side and throw it to your side. Well, it, they could do that, rather than shoot it over.
We're not going to enforce it, but I think that needs to be somewhere addressed.
The message needs to be there.
Well, I like five feet.
Ten, I, I could swallow. Twenty's a lot. Ten's reasonable and then...
Well, with ten...
And then five could be acceptable.
You've got to stay on each side. But you've got twenty, twenty to drive.
Potentially, except for the same things that have already been built that didn't comply
But the homeowners... Well, you can't change the past. Request to extend their driveway.
But they're taking it away from the property line. They're expanding it away from the property line. It's a non-issue.
I just saw that they were doing it, but...
They haven't yet, but they've talked to us about it.
They've already scraped it.
No. Maybe Jody, you should have read, I don't know. But I know they did come in and talk about it, so. Yeah. Okay, well, everybody kind of comfortable with ten feet?
I would be comfortable with having the provision in there saying that, that all the, the building official can approve an alternate setback when required by the father.
So leave it at twenty or, or change it to ten with that?
Change it to ten with that.
Building officials say, "Okay, you can have fifteen in this situation. In this situation, you have to count."
Well, it'll go the other way, because they can always do fifteen. Ten is a minimum. So they may want five feet, but they can always take it further than, if they want a setback greater than ten feet, they can have that. That's, that's a minimum, so...
Well, but that's only two zones.
Unless it's changed to ten.
Yes.
I'd say if it's twenty, then they can make it fifteen if the topography allows it.
So you're, you'd be against making a change to ten feet?
Yeah, I would. I think for some of the same reasons John said. I mean, if, I mean, I don't have the issue between either of my neighbors, because the driver's driveway just goes that way and mine goes this way. And so the only place that is, I think, twenty feet or forty feet in our case, and it's right in the very...
Street.
Right in the street. Everything else is lots. Or him to throw it towards me and me to throw it towards him.
Okay, look in a broader sense, beyond your situation.
Doug is saying...
With ten feet, with ten feet being the standard and where it's twenty feet now, changing all that, changing that to ten feet.
How close can houses be, two houses?
Thirty.
The sixty between the two. So the houses can be fifteen feet off their property line, but the driveway has to be
Which is okay if you...
For a front of your garage, it's fine, because it allows you a little bit of garage return, so.
It makes your daughter's driveway your grass white off. Easily fixed.
As wide as your driveway is, they travel.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's not wide at the front. Get them out of the setback.
We've seen a lot that are less than twenty around the city. That's kind of what prompted the question a little bit, why twenty? I think people would see ten foot as being more reasonable.
And maybe even the definition of, is that just at the part where it touches the street and then as it goes in, it can, I mean, we need to define that more.
It's a subjective, it's a subjective thing.
And the parking pad or, you know?
Yeah.
All these different things that look just like a driveway.
Oh, bitch, I've got two strikes right here. Want to be late? I'm starting all the stuff along. Look to see what time it was and strike two. I'll just leave there.
Well, we don't have to have a consensus on it, but I'd, I'd be interested in each of your, each of your views if we change it.
My feeling is, well, I'd be left where it is and then provide the building official the opportunity to implant wider if the property...
Or less.
I think, you know, I'd say, why couldn't we just, we can close to the property line?
Isn't that just a variance? Isn't that just a variance?
It's very difficult through variance process.
Well, but I don't want to do that because it costs them to do variances now. And so I don't think we ought to put it there. We can't, there aren't building officials in Florida to do it.
They know the...
But then it'll put pressure on building officials, so with people saying, "Well, I think we can be..." I don't have... Maybe it hasn't come to us. They don't...
We don't want that.
Well, we take it off the building official. Of course, if you look at cities, a lot of cities have driveways that are...
Together.
Together.
Most cities are semi-flat.
There you go.
The city does not have a flat spot in it, okay? There's a few.
My...
This city does... It wasn't one before you started to build.
That's why they call it hills.
Well, my two cents is make it ten feet. Make it smaller just so that it's simpler.
I think there'd be less. I suggest at ten feet, people would be more comfortable with that.
Let you lay out the house, I think, actually better on the lot. I mean, overall, that kind of dictates where you put your house, with your garage and everything else.
That's a good point. Give them a little more flexibility.
Just give it more flexibility. You might get the houses placed more in the middle. You might have some that are thirty feet away, and you don't know.
Well, I will tell you that had it been less...
You couldn't have put your house on there.
It would take a lot, and our circular driveway would have been a lot easier to navigate than it is now.
Are you one that where you have to, like, go in and back up a little bit and then go around?
Not quite.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like that, PDC, pretty dark.
Were there any downsides if yours was, had been ten feet setback instead of twenty? Any downside to that?
We wouldn't have had that. One rule of laws would not have done it.
Retaining wall.
You could have...
I may have had that, a retaining wall.
But on the other hand, you could, on your own, take it to twenty if you wanted to do that. Right now, you couldn't take it to ten. So there's still flexibility if a person wants to do a ten-foot, if we make it, excuse me, if we make it ten feet, they can still do a twenty, or thirty, or forty, whatever, just not less than ten feet. If we give the building official then the option to adjust if needed below that ten feet, depending upon the topography and so forth of the house. But the person has more flexibility in the placement of the driveway if we make it ten feet. I guess that's one thing that I'm looking at, that they can still make it twenty if they want to, but the option there is to make it ten and still comply with the city ordinance. Laurie, what's your thought?
I like five feet, and I think ten feet is, you know, better than the way it is now.
John?
I think to move the twenty down to ten is okay. Those others, I would just leave them alone. Again, we've got part of the challenges up here that, I've built for thirty years and all over the Wasatch front, and this is unique. And so that's definitely something to be factored into this. As we saw this winter, you can engineer anything. But it doesn't mean houses don't slide off the cliff, okay?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? That was all engineered. You can engineer it. That doesn't mean it's gonna work, but you get somebody to engineer it.
You get a stamp.
You get a stamp.
If you can even engineer it.
Yeah.
You can engineer it, so.
Well, they're eating it up there now.
Well, so having said that, is you go less than twenty, depending on slope. Even if it gets engineered, it could potentially become a problem for the person downhill.
Or maybe if you can get closer, you won't need as much engineering, because you're working better with the slope.
I'm thinking of, here's your lot. This is the guy wanting less than twenty feet. And this is the guy down here that's gonna pay the price. He's gonna get more snow, he's gonna get all this stuff. If that wall fails, he's the one that gets it. Doesn't matter. He didn't do anything, and then he's the one paying the price on it. That's my concern. That's gonna be so lot specific, so lot specific.
And I think, I agree with John, I mean, I know five feet makes no sense to me, because there's no way you're gonna keep that snow blower. You're going to be throwing snow on the other person's driveway. If you're only five feet away from the line, and he's only five feet away from the line, and then you're gonna have problems.
If the driveways are adjacent, the driveways are on the pole.
Yeah.
Mine's on both sides of the lot.
Yeah. Well, that'd be my concern. I mean, if you want to take the twenty down to ten, that's fine. I think you just need to put a couple of caveats in about retention.
And ten means twenty.
Combined, combined, yes.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Does changing it really change that caveat at all, though, if you think about it? Because either way, if you have a lot that's got that big of a slope or a problem, you're gonna have that wall situation.
You're gonna have something.
Even if it's twenty down five.
But the twenty, hopefully, would put the wall a little further away from your lot, per se. You know, again, it's, you know... Twenty's a lot. I guess if you want a real baseline, twenty is a lot. Less, I think, is an option. There just needs to be things addressed, because as I said, you can engineer anything, including something that shouldn't be engineered.
Yeah.
Somebody pushes something hard enough, or somebody's got, like, they're gonna check, they'll get anything they want engineered.
Well, I think, you know, probably making issues where we've been talking about, the only ones we're talking about. I mean, some are already ten, ten feet, the two acre and the one acre, in a different kind of form.
Yeah, so in R119...
R119 is already a seven and a half.
Yeah, so that's a non-issue, yeah. So your R1-1 and your R1-2, right?
Yeah.
Is basically the same as an R40 and an R80, right?
Yeah.
Those should be, have some continuity. They should have some continuity.
But the critical point of that is the frontage, because those that are now ten, the frontage is only a hundred and fifty feet. The others is two hundred feet. So it's fifty feet wide.
Which is probably why you've had the difference in the terminology, yeah.
Uh-huh. You know, that's the problem with wanting a ten feet, because of the, oh, it's one fifty and two hundred.
That's minimum. Minimum width, it could be larger than that.
Two hundred, two hundred, two hundred, three hundred.
We've got two hundred logs, two hundred width logs, one ten feet, one's twenty.
Yeah, those should...
Those should be consistent.
So, so if you're looking for a change, you probably should take the twenty on those and convert it to ten, and that's the other, and leave it at that.
I think that'd be...
God, that way you have some congruence.
How do you feel, Larry?
Well, I like the number twelve, so you'd only... Twelve's a good number for construction. Ten is a nightmare. What's five feet? Yeah, give me a four-by-five sheet of plywood. It just doesn't...
Yeah.
Well, I really do like the number twelve.
Change them all to twelve.
By me.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll run it by the council and see where they're coming down on it.
Test the water.
Yeah.
Test, test the river.
Okay, well, I appreciate your participation and everything. Is there anything else that we need to? Laurie, thanks for reminding me of that on the driveway. I'll take a motion.
I'm ready to charge.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Can you back shut that off, Laurie? Back here.